Good evening and welcome to the April 10th, 2017 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. If you would please stand and join me for the invocation and the pledge.
Our Father, as we come to you this evening, we thank you for the opportunity of serving you, and we thank you, dear God, for your mercy in our life, and, dear Lord, for the privilege of being able to serve this community. And so, Father, we pray your special blessing upon this commission meeting, that your hand will be upon each and every one, be upon the commission members, as well as those who are here to testify, and we pray that you will just guide and direct in all that's done, that you'd give wisdom and direction. We thank you, dear God, that you are the Lord of our life, and we just honor you today, and we thank you today that we serve a risen Savior. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Hello. My name is Sherri Reeves. I'm the vice chairperson for the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I will be presiding over the commission's deliberations on hearing items this evening. The Planning and Zoning Commission sits in advisory capacity to the Town Council and reviews planning and zoning issues and forwards recommendations regarding these important issues to the council. This evening's proceedings will be conducted using the following format. First, I will read the hearing application into record. Following the identification of the hearing application, staff will present the case and their recommendations to the commission, after which questions from the Planning and Zoning Commission will be directed to staff regarding the case. After the commission initially reviews the application, the floor will be open to comment. At this time, the applicant will have an opportunity to comment regarding the matter and answer any questions. It is at that point that I will open the floor to the general comment from the public regarding planning cases before the commission. I ask that you direct your pertinent comments to the commission through the chairperson and not the applicant, staff, or individual within the audience. I would also appreciate your cooperation in making your statements brief and to the point, as I may exercise the prerogative to confine public comment, if needed, to five-minute intervals per person, should there be considerable public involvement in the case. I call this meeting to order. The April Planning and Zoning Commission. Christie, can I have a roll call?
Commissioner Deskey.
Here.
Commissioner Rankin.
Here.
Commissioner Roberts.
Here.
Commissioner Rutherford.
Here.
Commissioner Zercher.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Reeves.
Here.
Chairperson Yater.
Unto the approval of the minutes. If the commission has reviewed the minutes, I would entertain a motion to approve the March minutes.
So moved.
Second. Christie.
Commissioner Rutherford.
Aye.
Commissioner Rankin.
Aye.
Commissioner Roberts.
Oui.
Commissioner Deskey.
Aye.
Commissioner Zercher.
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Reeves.
Aye. Under the announcement category, are there any announcements this evening? Very well then, we will go right on to our public hearing items. The first being RP-17-001, upon the application of Michael B. and Barbara J. Normelin, a request for the revisionary plot to combine Prescott Country Club Unit 6, Lot 131 and 132 into new Lot 131R. Let's read the right one.
Greg did that one.
Here it is. Yes, thank you. Let's start again. Too many pieces of paper. RP-17-004, is that the right one? Yes. Upon the application of Charles R. Leon, a request for revisionary plot in the Prescott Valley Unit 20 to combine the north half of Lot 100 with Lot 99, and the south half of Lot 100 with Lot 101, located at 4866, 4884, and 4900 North Carla Vista Drive.
Thank you, Vice Chair and Commissioners. As you see here on the illustration, the owners of Lot 99 and 101 in Unit 20 both bought half of Lot 100 in order to both create larger lots, 99R and 101R. The new lots meet the zoning standards of the R1 MH10 district. Staff recommends the commission approve RP-1704 and forward to the Town Council.
I've got it here. There it is. Commissioners, any questions?
No questions.
Questions? I will entertain a motion to approve RP-17-004.
I move to approve RP-17-004 and forward it on to the Town Council.
I'll second.
Chairman. That motion does that include a recommendation for approval?
Yes.
You don't say it wrong?
I would think so. To carry a... No. Is the applicant here?
No.
We can just do so amended.
Okay. And I heard that it was to be approved to recommend it for approval to the council. I second. Second, okay. Christie.
Commissioner Zercher.
Yes.
Commissioner Deskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Rankin.
Yes.
Commissioner Rutherford.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Reeves.
Yes.
Next item up, RP-17-005, upon the application of Gerald B. Johnson, a request for revisionary plot to adjust the common line between Lot 3937 and 3938, Prescott Valley Unit 13, located at 3124 and 3126, North Navajo Drive.
Thank you, Vice Chair and Commissioners. As the photo illustrates here, the fence in Lot 3938 encroaches about two feet into Lot 3937, and the adjustment of the lots will place the fence entirely on Lot 3938. The new revised lots, 3937R and 3938R, meet the zoning standards of the R2-3 district, and staff recommends commission approve RP-1705 and forward to the Town Council.
Commissioners, any questions?
No.
Is the applicant here this evening?
No, they aren't here.
I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chairman, I move that RP-17-005 be approved by the commission and forwarded to the Town Council with the recommendation for approval.
I'll second that. Christie.
Commissioner Rutherford.
Yes.
Commissioner Rankin.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Deskey.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Rankin.
Yes.
Commissioner Rutherford.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Reeves.
Yes.
Continuing on, PDP-17-002, upon the application of Pronghorn Development LLC, request for preliminary development plan for the amendment of lots 31 through 42 in Pronghorn Ranch Unit 1, and then, and new lots 31 through 42 in 1298 and 1320, and amending the corresponding portions of the Pronghorn Ranch master plan, generally located east of the Lucky Shoe Way and north of Antelope Meadows Drive.
Yeah, and why don't you go and read the second one, too? I'm gonna discuss these together, so.
Okay, very well.
Be great.
We will also be discussing PDP-17-003, upon the application of the Pronghorn Development LLC, request for preliminary development plan for Unit 18, and being an amendment to the Pronghorn Ranch master plan corresponding to Unit 18, from 110 lots to the maximum of 154 lots, generally located to the east of Antelope Meadows Drive, approximately 700 feet north of Shooting Star Trail.
Thank you, Vice Chair and Commissioners. The graphic here illustrates the Pronghorn Ranch master plan that was approved in May 8th in 1920, along when the property was rezoned, and the approval was for 1,440 units on, there might have been a typo in there, if there is, it says 1,440 units on 640 acres. The project is subject to a preliminary adequacy determination. There is a Department of Water Resources for 100-year water supply for the 1,440 units. So far, there have been final development plan approvals for about 1,070 residential lots, up to the present Unit 16. This graphic here illustrates the lots that are highlighted in black, or the lots that have been platted already up to Unit 16. Unit 17 has been approved and not platted yet. This illustrates where Unit 18 is presently planned, and shows the Unit 1, the amended area proposed for Unit 1. Property owners are seeking a minor increase in the number of housing units, as allowed for by the Arizona Department of Water Resources, to utilize the full pre-declaration water allocation for the Pronghorn Ranch project. Initial changes are included in these two requests for preliminary development plans. Regarding PDP-1702, Unit 1 was approved on March 27, 2001, for 54 lots. Another of the lots in Unit 1 remained undeveloped, as they were much larger than the average lots in Pronghorn Ranch, and were not marketable. The owner now wishes to amend portions of Unit 1 to reconfigure existing lots 31 through 42 into new lots 31 through 42, and additional lots 1298 through 1320, which is an increase of 23 lots. This is the amended area of amendment of Unit 1. Unit 18 has not been approved yet. The corresponding area of the approved master plan identifies 110 lots. Now, the owner now wishes to increase the total lots in the Unit 18 up to the maximum of 154 lots. Final development plans could be approved then for up to 154 lots, or less, if PDP-1703 is approved. With 23 additional lots in Unit 1, and a maximum of 154 lots in Unit 18, there would be a subtotal of about 1,250 lots approved and platted at that time. Unit 18, shown here, a portion of it is in a FEMA floodplain presently, and would be subject to a conditional letter of map revision, and a letter of map revision approval from FEMA to redirect any of those flows, and that would be required prior to final development plan. The engineer is here later if any questions come up on that. So the current approved lot total would fall within the preliminary adequacy determination for the 100-year water supply for the 1,440 units. The project lot totals, including amended Unit 1 and 18, are consistent with the approved preliminary Pronghorn Ranch traffic study. Additional lot densities, as allowed for by ADWR, will be sought later in a revision to the master plan and preliminary development plan for final units 19 and 20, subject to revised traffic study. Again, just going back and putting in context where Unit 18 would be, and the subsequent 19 and 20 up to the north. Neighborhood meeting for Units 1 and 18 were held with all property owners within 1,000 feet, having been noticed by first-class male. You received a copy of the minutes from that meeting, discussing the attendees and the issues addressed. Staff observes that the proposed preliminary development plans and amendments to the Pronghorn Ranch master plan are consistent with the low-density residential designation of General Plan 2025, and suggests that separate motions be made for each request, PDP-1702 and 1703. With that, I would ask for separate motions, and if you have any questions, I'm available, and also the property owner and his engineer are also here.
Thank you.
They may wish to speak.
Question? Yep. Bring the applicant. Like to say a few words?
Good evening. My name is Dave Grounds, and I'm the owner of Dorn Homes, and our address is 600 West Gurley Street in Prescott. I'm here to address any questions or concerns that you may have about the proposal. It's, it's, the home sites are, on Unit 18 are 55 feet wide. The homes will fit within the designated setback requirements. It'll be predominantly one-story units with some two-story units. We're currently developing the subdivision directly south of it, so we'll be the most affected. And we're just, we're excited. We think it's gonna be a great addition to Pronghorn, and it fits within all the required unit counts.
Thank you very much.
When you had the neighborhood meeting, did, did all the questions from the neighbors get asked at that time? Did they get answered for them?
Well, and I don't want to speak for those folks, but I think they did, and I'll answer that by grounding the assertion that we had a number of people show up, and the concerns included things like drainage. Please tell us how the drainage is gonna be affected, especially for the people that are on the east side of the big channel that currently runs along the east side of Pronghorn. And we had people that were asking about the two-story, you know, if it's gonna affect their views. Those seem to be the two biggest concerns, and the way we addressed each one on the height, we're gonna be four to five feet below the height requirement that we can be for a two-story unit. And I walked to different people's houses that live in the area, identified where their view would be affected, and we agreed for those folks not to put two stories behind their houses, just to kind of be good neighbors, both people that are in Pronghorn, and also for a lady that lives in the county on the other side of the channel. So we addressed that, and they all seemed to be satisfied with that at the time. And then on the channel, we reminded them that as we go through this channel design with our engineering team, we cannot increase the flow that's going to affect the east side of that bank. We cannot come in there and develop the subdivision and negatively affect them in any way. And so as we go through our development plans, and we submit this to the town engineering team, that'll be, you know, something that we'll be very focused on.
Thank you.
Anyone else? No. Yes, there's no more comments at this time. Would you like to make a statement?
Me? No, we just appreciate the partnership we've had with the town since we've entered the homebuilding market in Prescott Valley years ago. It's been, I think, a great partnership with the town, and we're grateful for the support we received. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask if there's any public comment regarding this. Ma'am, would you like to come forward? Please state your name for all of us.
My name is Pamela Carver. I'm the female on that side, the east side. And so far, everything's been, I mean, they've been very cooperative, the communication is there. I didn't get to the last meeting, because I had like two hours' notice, and I guess they didn't have my information. I've got several concerns. We have the floodplain up there that is not the floodplain when I moved in. I actually have pictures of the area in 1996. Most of the floodplain was in the area where the homes are gonna be. The only reason that floodplain is up there, because when Pronghorn was first built in 2004, 2005, they flooded our area, because the water from the runoff there came around and formed that. I had water, I've lived there almost 30 years, and water is always soaked in. It didn't get a chance to. It was flowing and gushing from their retention basin. I realize they're gonna work on it, but I just want to get it on the record as to what my concerns are. I'm on a well, and the runoff from up there is two big runoffs between 59 and 60, and 53 and 54. 134 homes are gonna be draining down to my area that do not drain right now. It soaks in. Water has never come from that direction. It has come from where their retention basin is. It has never come from that area. My other concern is, the air, there's only 90 feet between the properties. I don't know how they're gonna divert all that water away from us, and it's not gonna be clean water, because it'll be from pavement, pesticides, anything else that's been used. But there is a road at the base of my property. It's loosely identified as a road, because it's a chip seal over the high-power sewer line, which is fine, except there are three, I abut properties approximately 51 through 59, and it's 660 feet. And in that area, there are three manholes in the floodplain. My concern is, one, is that water, when it sits on that, gonna cause a problem? And, two, that is a lower area than the area where the sewage is gonna be going into Prescott Valley, therefore, they need, they need the high-power area, the relay station. My question is, and I don't think anybody's ever brought it up, what happens if the power goes out? Does the relay station have a backup power? Because you don't want all the water sitting there, and you don't want the sewage sitting there, and then going poof like this, because I've seen what happens when that does happen. So my concern is not only drainage, but correct drainage, and obviously, the houses are gonna have to be built, you know, that's, we understood that. But I'm concerned about drainage and affection, affecting my well, and also the property, because I have, my lower five acres is what they call a recovery site for burrowing owls. And if I have 134 homes going right this way into my home, I'm concerned about those owls. They've been on the property for 12 years now, and they're federally protected, and I don't want to run into a problem with that. I've been assured, you know, that this will be taken care of and whatnot, and I'm just, as I said, I just want to get some of these concerns on the record. I'm concerned about those manholes. One of them's airborne. There's nothing around the top of it. It's just eroded away. And if they have to get down to the high-power sewer line, they've gotta take up the chip seal. And when they were putting this in, they kicked all the dirt right over onto my fence. I went, had to go down there and tell them, "I'd appreciate if you'd kind of move the dirt over a little bit," not on the fence. And, but my main concern is just what I've mentioned. So far, I've gotten calls back from everyone. They've been more than, you know, involved. So, you know, I just need to keep in touch with them, and go to the meetings like I did tonight, so.
Wonderful. Thank you very much for your comment. Would anybody like to answer any of the things that she's brought up this evening?
Madam Chairman, may we ask it, this has been addressed by the builder?
That's exactly what.
Well, there've been several meetings, and they followed up. I was aware of the comments, and I know they followed up. So I say, the engineer, it's a drainage issue, the engineer is here. If you'd like to ask them, him, questions specifically about the drainage?
No, not that I would be frankly qualified to ask, only if that has been addressed, the questions that she raises, and if they have, then I'll be satisfied.
The speaker keeps referring to a high-power sewer line. It's a pressure sewer. The gradient of the ground falls towards, actually Coyote Springs, and there's a lift station which transfers sewage back up by a pressure system, so it drains into the town system near the Alafría River, so that it has the proper, then, drainage all the way down to the sewer plant. The other issue regarding, and Joe referenced it in his presentation, FEMA requires that any floodplain or area that carries a 100 or 500-year event be analyzed and mapped, and Joe referred to a CLOMAR. It's a conditional letter of map revision. What will have to happen in order to move forward, and I do appreciate the speaker's comments, because when Pronghorn was first developed, there were property owners affected immediately to the north, and they were negatively affected because of floodwaters. The speaker is, I believe, in Coyote Springs, based on the way she described her property, and the natural topography would cause water to move that direction. So it'll be incumbent upon the engineer to deliver a recommendation and a plan to FEMA. There is a public process with that. There will be a public process to amend the map panels for FEMA, and after that public process goes forward, then, when the improvements take place, there will be a letter of map revision, which will change the FEMA flood panel to correspond to the engineering and the approved engineering. So there's a rather involved process. It doesn't happen overnight. I do appreciate, again, the speaker's comments. As it relates to a well, there's little probability that you would have contamination, because you're talking about surface water, as opposed to necessarily water that would percolate down into the aquifer. If the speaker, and I'm sure she sounded like she understands the processes, so she could be involved in those. Also, wells, when they're drilled, are capped properly so as to not be invaded by stormwater runoff. Again, I'm trying to answer very generally, but also make sure that I speak with the person and give her my card if she has questions as the process evolves. But it's not just a town review. It would be the federal group with FEMA that regulates floodplains, floodways, and 100-year storm events for the federal government.
So, so in condition A here, where we're talking what be required by the Fire Marshal and Public Works Director, the FEMA process would already be done and brought to our Public Works Department?
That's correct. As Joe pointed out, we wouldn't be taking a final development plan forward until the conditional letter of map revision has been approved. Then they would go out and construct the improvements, and at that point in time, they'd get the letter of map revision, which would change the configuration of that floodplain. Again, it's not an easy task, but the mapping that was originally done in someplace like Prescott Valley was done at a very large scale, and so this is bringing it down to finer detail with benefit of good engineering.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, Richard. Any other public comment?
I'm Elizabeth Brewer, and I live, I abut up to Unit 1, and I wanted to let you know how thrilled we are about what Pronghorn developers are going to be doing on the property on which we abut. They had a meeting at the clubhouse for all of the people whose property is coming up to where they're going to build, and they were thoughtful enough neighbors to tell us that we are going to have large lots similar to our lot sizes backing up to ours, because ours are at least a third of an acre and up, and they are going to do the same for the lots behind us. And then the ones south will be smaller, which is where they're asking for the changes, as I understand it. We are just thrilled that they are thinking about us and our property values and our views. They're going to be building homes that are similar in size, no two stories to block views. They're just being very thoughtful, and we are thankful for them and what they're doing near our property.
Wonderful. Thanks for your comment. Anyone else?
Again, it's not an easy task, but the mapping that was originally done in someplace like Prescott Valley was done at a very large scale. And so this is bringing it down to finer detail with benefit of good engineering.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, Richard. Any other public comment? Yes.
I'm Elizabeth Brewer, and I live, I abut up to Unit 1. And I wanted to let you know how thrilled we are about what Pronghorn developers are going to be doing on the property on which we abut. They had a meeting at the clubhouse for all of the people whose property is coming up to where they're going to build. And they were thoughtful enough neighbors to tell us that we are going to have large lots similar to our lot sizes backing up to ours. Because ours are at least a third of an acre and up. And they are going to do the same for the lots behind us. And then the ones south will be smaller, which is where they're asking for the changes, as I understand it. We are just thrilled that they are thinking about us and our property values and our views. They're going to be building homes that are similar in size, no two stories to block views. They're just being very thoughtful, and we are thankful for them and what they're doing near our property.
Wonderful. Thanks for your comment. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Terry Stigall. I live like two lots down from Unit 18 there. And the gentleman earlier said that there's a notice mailed out to everybody within 1,000 feet. We never got a notice. I happen to find out about this meeting because I have to give it to the developers. They are really good about holding meetings. So I'm, I'm the skeptic of the group. I want to find out, see what happens when they actually do the things that they're talking about doing. Because drainage is a concern of mine. My neighbor in Coyote Springs, just south of the woman who spoke earlier, right now, there's a, there's two, or three pipes that point out towards Coyote Springs that drain the runoff out into the floodplain there, but they're pointed directly at his house. And I'm pretty sure he didn't get a notice, or I think he would have been here for this meeting too. So at some point, I just wanted, on the record, that we are concerned about the drainage and where it goes. We don't want to flood our neighbors in Coyote Springs, which I understand, you can't run, I keep hearing, you can't run more water off than what was there naturally or something to that extent. But I'd like it in the record that that is a concern of ours, that the drainage is taken care of. In fact, this meeting here tonight, I didn't realize, was to approve adding 44 lots, making it a much higher density than it was initially planned. Because the map that they handed out to us when they discussed all this shows 154 lots on it. So I just assumed that was already approved. And I come to find out that that's what this meeting is for. 17 of those lots are in the floodplain. There was a little map up here that showed the floodplain on it. And they held a meeting, and they told us that they'd build those lots up so that, so that they won't be flooded. But I haven't, there's no staff report, so I didn't know what the heck was going to be talked about here. But there's nothing, I didn't hear anybody else mention those 17 lots that are in the floodplain already. So putting something in writing saying that they have to build them up. Joe mentioned that, you know, he held a meeting with the property owners around the area, and he did, and is very good. They put polls up so you could see where two stories are, how high they would be, and one stories, how tall they would be. And he did promise us that certain lots wouldn't have two stories on them so that views could still, people keep, at least keep part of the view that they have now. But again, nowhere in all this, I don't know if it's in a staff report recommendation to you that these lots be limited to one story or not, because I never saw a staff report. But I'd like to, you know, somewhere along the line, make it so that this, this body limits how high they can build some of the houses that they promised us, won't be two-story. So, thank you.
Sir, could I get your last name again, please?
Stigall. S-T-I-G-A-L-L.
Any other comments?
My name's David Swanson. Elizabeth Brewer, who was up here a few minutes ago, is my wife. And we do, as she said, have a unit which backs up to the amended unit number one. We have one of the larger lots. One of my biggest concerns that I did express to the meeting that they had was, I was hoping that they weren't going to Californicate the homes and jam them all together. And so we're really thankful that they're going to have the bigger units against our back units so we don't have people looking over our backyards. That's a big deal to us, affects our property values, and want to be, let you know, I was real thankful for that. And that's what I wanted to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
My name's Ignacio Sines, and I live in Coyote Springs. And I'm just east of Unit 18. And the development company has addressed the concerns that I had about flood and the water coming over into our property. One of the things that I'm concerned with, and that's why I'm here, is how they designed that whole thing. The reservoir, it's not a reservoir, but it drains in, all the water, wastewater drains into it. And my concern is, is how it was designed, how it's approved. And you have four huge tubes that face directly to my property. And that actually affects the value of my property. I don't like it. And now the developers said they're going to look at doing something about that. But I want to go on record, I don't know who approved that plan. First of all, if it was the town of Prescott, because I tried to find out, I called the flood control, and they say, "Well, you're in a flood zone." I said, "Wait a minute. I got, how many houses do we have in that area now?" It may be a flood zone in that one area, but you didn't have, how many houses do we have? Four, 500, 600 homes? Proposed up to 1,200 draining into that area. And I have four big tubes that are four foot in diameter facing my home. And that affects the value of my property. And I don't, you know, I, I appreciate everything Pronghorn Ranch Development is doing. Their engineers, they're dressing, they're talking with us. We've had meetings. But this is an issue that I feel needs to be addressed too. And that is that, how can a development come in and put something that's going to affect the value of my home, my property, something that I worked for all my life? And that's the truth. I'm not, I'm not here, I bought that property back in 89 when there was nothing out there. And I, to be honest with you, I always knew it was going to be developed. But I never thought I would end up with four big tubes facing me. And that I don't like. So I would like the town of Prescott Valley to do something concerning that. Because somehow, it was approved to begin with through the town of Prescott Valley. That drainage, that whole system. This was before, it was when it was Brown family that was developing there. And I remember when I saw them build that, I just never thought that they were going to leave those tubes exposed like that. And now that, that the more development is going on in there, we see more water coming through there. And that's a concern that I have. And the value of my property. What it does is, you drive in, the first thing you see is that big old four tubes sticking out. There's no denying it. So I just would like this, be on record that I came here, took time, because I don't want to be here. I really don't. I didn't, never wanted to address this stuff. But it's, it's concerned me enough that, you know, this is the third meeting that I've been to. And I think that Pronghorn Development took the time to send us something. We had the meetings. They called me up. So they're addressing it right. But I'm concerned that when it gets all done, there's going to still be issues. And I don't want to be left with those issues, with nowhere to go. That's why I want to kind of, for it to be on record concerning my concern.
Thank you very much for your comment. Joe?
Directionist, want to mention that, again, that the project engineer is here, if you want to, want to ask him to, see if he can address some of the issues.
Sure. The project engineer? Sorry, I didn't catch your name.
My name is Rob Jarrett, and I represent Allen Consulting Engineers. We're the project engineers working on this project with Dorn Homes. And I wanted to say that we have held several meetings, and we've heard the concerns of, of the homeowners that are adjacent to Pronghorn, Unit 18, and Coyote Springs. And to address those concerns, what I can say, since our, our engineering process is not complete at this point in time, our floodplain engineer is looking at basically creating another channel on our property, like Dave Grounds mentioned earlier, that will basically capture runoff flows from 18 and convey them north, you know, to their historical outflow with no adverse impact to the, the homeowners that are in Coyote Springs at this point in time. That plan may require modifications to the existing detention structure that Ignacio was just talking about. When I, the last time I did speak to her engineer, I asked him if we, you know, did he think that we needed to make revisions to that? And he said, "At this point in time, he's not sure, but we may need to modify that." So.
In other words, you've got, in other words, you're aware of the situation?
We are.
That's correct. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I'm Pamela Carver again. I just want to get something on the record. I think I'm the only one that ever saw, when Brown put in that diversion or retention basin, the pipes are about this big and about that wide each, and they're black holes when you look at them. I see them directly from my property. He sees them from his property. What nobody seems to remember, and I saw it, I saw it on the plans from Yavapai of the flood district over there. At the time they put that in, we were all in amazement that the floodplain goes this way, and they put the pipes this way towards the two houses. Now, when I looked at the plans, and these plans have disappeared because I've been after them for several months, and FEMA knows them because they saw it. I talked to the fellow that was out there, and he says, "Well, things aren't quite what they were looking like supposedly." The pipes come out at this angle. The original plans had a berm right here to hit the water back down straight north. That never happened. And in 2005, because those pipes were in there, and nothing held any of the water back, if you can picture, three-foot-high gushers coming out of each one of those pipes, we have pictures of it. It was massive. They've since made sure you can't get quite that much water in there. But what I'm saying is, there was so much water coming out of there, it was unbelievable. And my property flooded to where it's never done before. But the thing is, is that there was supposed to be that berm there, and that was like, I think it was like 15 years ago that I saw it because Brown was out there at that time. But that, that little thing is nowhere to be found anywhere. But there was supposed to be something there to block the view and to divert the water straight north, and that has not happened. And there, Dorn's aware of it, but I just wanted to get it on record that originally, there was supposed to be something, but everything fell apart until they came in, and now it's not there. It's nowhere on any maps. Unless it's some, I've been told it's in Prescott Valley. Prescott Valley's told me it's in the county. County told me it's in the state. I don't have the time for that. I know what I saw. And it makes common sense. I mean, when you think about it, you don't want water just shooting out onto a property. So that little, that berm, whatever they were going to do, how they were going to make it, is not there. And that's one of the problems. So that the water goes where it's never gone before because it's, the water used to take a nice slow elbow, and now it goes poof, straight across where it used to go. So, and they're aware of it. But nobody knows where, what happened to that berm. The berm has disappeared. You know, so, and I'm sure they're going to end up with something there to divert the water. But in the meantime, just to have it on record, there was a berm supposed to be there at one time.
Very well. Thank you. Would the property owner like to come forward and make a statement?
Hi, Dave Grounds again. So I can't speak for what was approved and built back in 2004, 2005. As we've reminded the folks in the meetings that we've held, we don't want to devalue anyone's property, even though some of these properties are in the floodplain on the other side of the channel. And they knew homes were coming, and the homes that could be there could be full two-story houses as it's, as it's zoned. We're trying to go the extra mile to, to listen to the concerns, to address the concerns. We've got an engineering team working on it. As Mr. Parker mentioned, we're going to have biologists involved. The feds will be involved to do it right. So all these concerns, we hear loud and clear, and we don't want to proceed with a development that's going to hurt anybody. I mean, it's, life's too short. So I respect that they, they want to put it on record, and I would be doing the same if I were them. We're sensitive to it, and we'll be proceeding with our development plans, listening to their concerns loud and clear.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I hear remarks about making concessions between property owners regarding view sheds and so forth. Need to remind you that state law prohibits us from administering zoning codes on a sliding scale. So the height restrictions in the R1L are 35 feet. If the developer's making agreements with adjoining property owners as to the heights that they would define, they need to accompany that with deed restrictions on every one of those lots that would be part of the public record, that would show that those lots are sold with the explicit covenant that they cannot contain a two-story house. Community Development Department keeps track of a lot of information. I don't want to keep track of estraneous information regarding understandings or, or agreements between two property owners. That's not our business. So again, as part of the final development plan, the developer needs to address those lots that have covenants that restrain them from being developed with a two-story lot.
Thank you. Chair, will entertain a motion?
Madam Chair.
Sorry?
Like to make a motion. A move that we, we forward. A recommendation of approval for PDP 17-002 and PDP 17-003 to council? Or do we have to do it separately?
Separately.
Separately, okay. We'll do it separately. So PDP 17-002.
Just to clarify, the Planning and Zoning Commission has the responsibility to approve or deny you're not forwarding a preliminary development plan to council. So the proper motion would be, you're moving that the commission approve PDP, and then simultaneously, or by separate motion, you're moving to approve you're not forwarding a preliminary development plan to council.
I stand corrected.
Madam Chairman, may I suggest an amendment to the motion to add subject to condition A below?
Yes. That'd be added?
Yes.
And a second?
I'll second.
Kristi?
Commissioner Zercher?
Yes.
Commissioner Dusky?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Rankin?
Yes.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Drives?
Yes.
And at this time, I entertain a motion for PDP 17-003.
I'll make the motion to approve PDP 17-002, subject to condition A.
Who, 03, Larry?
03, I apologize.
And I'll second that.
Kristi?
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner Rankin?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Dusky?
Yes.
Commissioner Zercher?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Drives?
Yes.
This concludes our public hearing portion. The next thing on our agenda this evening is election of officers.
Madam Vice Chairman, around this time every year, the commission elects officers, and that would be the chair and vice chair. It's typically done, the chair would open the floor for nominations. Having heard nominations, would ask if there were any additional nominations for chair. If... If there's only one nomination for chair, then it's a foregone conclusion, unless the individual would not want to accept that position. If, however, there are multiple nominations for the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission, you take those nominations, take them under advisement, and then you ask for a vote. I would recommend that you, instead of doing a voice vote, that rather you instruct me to distribute materials, and you would do that by ballot. And likewise, then, after the chair is elected, you would continue, Madam Chairman, in asking for nominations for vice chair, and the same process would unfold, and hopefully you would elect a vice chair. I know that, talking with Chairman Yader as recently as last Friday morning, he's not interested in a leadership position on the Planning and Zoning Commission, has some family issues that he's been dealing with that takes him away and did take him away today, so he would not accept a nomination to continue as the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I would assist you in any respect in seeking nominations or closing nominations and moving on to voting.
This time, we'll take nominations for chairman?
Madam Chairman, I nominate Vice Chairman Drives as chairman.
Madam Chair, I would, I'd not like to nominate Matt Zerker for chairman.
This time, I think we need some ballots. Well, now I know we have two. Are there any other nominations? There are none? Thank you.
You okay?
At this time, I'd like to open nominations for vice chair.
Well, Larry, since you nominated me, I'd love to nominate you for vice chair.
Mr. Rankin? Did you hear you nominate?
And I appreciate that.
You?
Too much of a time commitment.
That's understandable.
Anyone else? Any other nominations? At this point, we have one nomination for...
Close nominations and vote on.
Okay. At this point, we are closing the nomination with the only candidate being Larry Rankin. All those in favor of Larry Rankin becoming the vice chair of Planning and Zoning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye's happening. Stuck there.
We forgot to ask any names earlier. Did you, did you want to know?
Right after the call to the public.
Will do call to the public. Consideration and discussion of comments from the public. Those wishing to address the Planning and Zoning Commission need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date. Do we have anyone wishing to address the commission? Seeing none? We'll move on.
I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Mr. adjourn.
Need to adjourn.